Okay, good evening, everyone.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Thank you. I keep forgetting. Hey, what can I tell you? This is 2021, right? It's the modern times. Okay. It is Thursday, November 18th. It's 6:30 PM. And I'd like to welcome everyone to the village council meeting for the village of Royal Palm Beach. I'll ask everyone at this time to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Diane, can you please let the record show that all members are present? And with that, we'll start out with reports. Today, we did have a... It was previously unscheduled meeting, but we had a special meeting for the Transportation Planning Authority. There's been some changes in leadership there in terms of the executive director. Nick Uren has resigned. And the purpose of the meeting today was to put a process in place so that we can replace him. And we also decided to have our elections for offices for 2022. And new county mayor Ryan Wuth was selected as the new chair of the TPA. So we wish him well, and we want to continue to work and get things done at the TPA. And we'll keep you posted as we move forward. With that, I guess we'll start with you, Diane.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to pass on my condolences again to the Swift family. So we did lose David Swift a couple of weeks ago. So again, to his family and friends. We had read for the record, so I want to thank the staff and students over at H.L. Johnson for letting me join them again. It was a wonderful time. I had a nice group in there with me as well. And we had... All the students got to hear the story this year. We do have food trucks and concerts coming up. So Friday's over at Commons Park. Tomorrow is Matchbox 20 and Hootie and the Blowfish. And then next Friday is Lenny Kravitz with Stone Temple Pilots. And then they're going to do a special one on that Saturday, the 27th, is a movie for Wreck-It Ralph. And then Saturday, Green Markets over at Village Hall, right outside here. The school district is doing their food distribution. So they're doing that where each student can get nine meals and nine snacks starting next week. So for the Thanksgiving break, because they're out of school. It is on a first-come, first-served basis. So please go to palmbeachschools.org/sfs to register and to get your school information on there. The Solid Waste Authority is holding a viral projects... Virtual, I'm sorry. Virtual projects.
No, uh...
Not viral, but virtual.
Floridaian, yeah, right?
It is the solid waste. A virtual projects 2022 Business Opportunity Forecast Conference. So it's all about information of coming up projects and purchasing opportunities for solid waste. And they do everything from solopreneurs to major companies that can bid on these. So if you go to swa.gov, the number 2G.com is all the information. It's December 2nd from 8:00 AM to noon. And we wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That completes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, I had the opportunity, along with Councilman Hamara, Councilwoman Rudusky, to attend the annual Farm City Luncheon, which was, you know, great for it to be back after the COVID times. And I would like to encourage everyone, their message was, you know, without our farmers, we don't have any food. And we should really appreciate the importance of farming in our lives, and in particular for our local farmers. And if you can, look in the grocery stores for the Fresh from Florida sign. And if you can, support our local growers. And I think it was two weeks ago, I was able to attend the interview process for the new principal at Royal Palm Beach High School. We had a lot of excellent candidates. And I think it was last night, Michelle Fleming was approved... Confirmed, however they say. She seems like she's going to be a phenomenal fit with us. She has an extensively long track record of success. And I expect good things out of her over at the high school. And that's it. Oh, and they finally won their last game of the football season, the Wildcats did. So we weren't winless.
It was close.
It was a win.
I got some info... A call on about the selection that was going to be recommended at the next district meeting on Principal Fleming. And she does have a very interesting track record of experience that she's bringing to bear. So I'm sure she'll, you know, she'll do well.
Continuing with the education thing. The November Education Advisory Board meeting showcased Royal Palm Beach Elementary, which is notoriously known as the happiest place on earth. And if you doubt it, spend some time over there. Principal Tracy Geddy introduced the Bobcat Chorus, who did the National Anthem for us. Not here, not physically present, but livestreamed. And Principal Geddy told us about the school this year having 692 kids, larger than it has been in many years. She was proud to say that 42 of her staff and faculty members have kids or grandkids attending the school this year. And that their first Bobcat alumnus is teaching on the faculty this year. So she was really proud of that. They have had the, I think, the great experience of watching a group that has really engaged dads in a big way called Watch Dogs. And that stands for Dads Are Great Students. Over the last half a dozen years or so, that's been in place at Royal Palm Beach Elementary. It's expanded. But every year, they want it with more than 200 dads who volunteer to actually come in, take a day off or a half a day off of work, and actually come in and be with their kids in the school. And it's a great opportunity for both the kids and also for the dads. The school's still adjusting, though, to the post-pandemic period. There were 11 retirements from the staff and the faculty since March 2020. I don't think that's unique to Royal Palm Beach Elementary. I think that's part of the challenge in the school district going forward. But the bright spot, and of course Tracy's pretty good at finding bright spots, is that new teachers come with new ideas and new energy, and they've got them coming up. They're working real hard on math scores, because that seemed to be the area that was hit hardest as a result of the pandemic and kids being at home. Math tends to be one of those topics that in-person teaching, over-the-shoulder, and being there to answer questions is really, really important. So they've got some techniques for catching up, and I think they're going to work on it. At the district level, like I just said, staffing, teachers, bus drivers, vacancies, really, really challenging. And even with a $1,000 bonus, I think they're now looking at the possibility of raising pay as a way to bring on folks to fill out those really important positions. And of course, you know, Rich had an opportunity to sit on the interview board. I'm sure he enjoyed it. And it looks like we came out with a good candidate for replacement for Dr. Armus. One other thing I wanted to mention was it's that time of year. It's the... I'm not talking about the holidays. I'm talking about getting ready for the legislative session in Tallahassee. And probably a bad comparison, actually, as I think about it. But anyway, we always start off, "we" being the Palm Beach County League of Cities, the county itself, the school district, with an opportunity to sit down with representatives from Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. And we did that on November the 10th, from a League of Cities point of view. So I brought with you a little brochure that shows what the priorities are from a League of City point of view for the coming year. This is the opportunity for the League to say, what kind of legislative action would they support? What do they want to see? Of course, we haven't yet got into dealing with the realities of Bill's file. We're hearing about some. But this is probably the most optimistic period of time that we have going. And you'll see that a lot of those items in there have to do with home rule and trying to retain the control at a local level. And we also talked about transportation funding, but we didn't talk that much about funding. What we talked about was something that we've taken advantage of here in Royal Palm Beach, and that is the electric vehicle charging infrastructure. We just adopted in Oregon, just not so long ago, actually, that provided guidelines. And I think our village engineer has been engaged with FP and outline discussions toward identifying an arrangement with and also locations for charging stations on public property. All of this is to say, in a sense, that we're trying to prepare for the opportunity to get funds through the infrastructure bill. And that's one of the items, electric vehicle infrastructure, that we are pretty sure we're going to wind up with an opportunity to put some additional resources against that at the local level as well. Just a reminder that, if you didn't know, there's a pre-legislative session that will be conducted by Florida League of Cities in a webinar on December the 16th. And so you can get the latest update, you can hear about some of the bills we ought to be specifically concerned about during that session. And then the Monday morning call-ins will start at 9:00 AM on January the 10th, opening day. And I saw you had the agenda, you had the Palm Beach County Day information. If you want to talk about that, I'll be good.
No, go ahead.
All right. And that... So Palm Beach County Day is January 11th and 12th. Sounds like more than one day to me. And Florida League of Cities Legislative Action Days are February 8th through the 9th. So that's what's going on from the local point of view on activities in Tallahassee. On a personal note, I just want to just mention that I'm proud to say that as we're meeting here right now, Carolyn, my wife, is at the council chambers in the town of Palm Springs, being recognized for help in providing masks, face coverings. At the very beginning of the pandemic, when you may remember, it was really difficult to get masks. And so she made dozens of masks, and she provided them to the staff at their request. Haven't heard about her and a group of women that were actually doing sewing of masks. Ultimately, they sewed over 10,000 masks. And so they're thanking her this evening. And I'm really proud of her. So I just wanted to mention that.
Right, glad you said that. Very nice.
No report this evening, Mayor.
No report, Mayor. Thank you. Also, no report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, that closes reports. At this time, if anyone has a petition to present to the council, now would be the time?
No petitions, ma'am.
You got more comment cards?
One more.
All right, I'm closing the floor to acceptance of petitions. And hold on, let me see what we got here. This is a non-agenda item? Okay. All right. Do we have any prior submissions of public comments?
No, Mayor.
Right. Do you have any hands raised for public comments on items not on the agenda or the consent agenda? Okay. We do have comment cards tonight. Yeah, we have people here.
Wonderful conversation.
Okay. For a non-agenda item, we have Frank Chiarla. Chialla.
I'm here tonight to talk to you about David Swift. And as you all know, he did pass away. I knew David back when I was on the Water Control District in Locksatch Groves, and he was the councilman. And we both had no gray hair. We both sat on the Western Communities Council together, and they actually had to separate us at one meeting, because they thought we were fighting amongst ourselves with each other, when in fact, we were having fun, because he was making me laugh, and I was making him laugh. But... And I've had lunch or breakfast with him at Hillary's for the last two or three years. And every now and then, yeah, I would be with people I know, and he's with people he knows. And he would come over to me, and I'd go, "Oh, jeez, what does Dave want now?" And he would come over, and he'd say, "Hey, Frank, do you know... Do you know what's killing the Everglades?" You know, because he was all about water. He was all about open space and things like that. So I'm here on behalf of some of the other people that talked at his memorial, and the mayor was there, and Councilman Hamara was there. And, you know, I would ask for your consideration in naming something after him, a living memorial. I know that he was about open space. I know he was about water. Those were his two main focuses. And I didn't realize that he had devoted 29 years of service to the people of Royal Palm Beach, which in itself is just incredible, to be there that long. And you all know that, as elected officials like I do, that, you know, very seldom do people come up and tell you, "Hey, you're doing a great job," and shout it from rooftops. But when something goes wrong, they're the first ones up there on the rooftop saying, "You guys did it wrong," and all that. So for him to be able to spend 29 years here is truly incredible, and he will be missed. And I had made this... The suggestions were made over their playground or a shelter, something like that. And I said, "You know, I really don't... That's not David." You know, he was about water. He was about open space. And Commons Park is one of his biggest achievements, like it was with a lot of others here on the council. So, you know, I had said to the mayor, I said, "You know, maybe the lake over at Commons Park, you know, maybe Swift Lake or Lake Swift or something like..." Just to give you an idea. So I'm asking you to, you know, consider it a future council meeting, if you could. He was a good friend, not only to the people of Royal Palm Beach, but to everybody in the Western Communities. And he actually was one of those guys that actually took interest in everybody. And he just wasn't about Royal Palm Beach, because, like we all know, we're all out here together, and we all have to go ahead and live together. And what we do in Locksatch Groves can affect people in Royal Palm Beach and vice versa. Thank you very much.
All right, before you go, hold on a second.
Thank you.
Because this subject did come up at the service for him, I asked the manager to update us on... I know we had a procedure in place. Wasn't quite sure what it was. But maybe you could just let him know, for him to make this request, as per our procedure, what he should do. Appreciate it.
You can give him a copy. He can take that with him.
The first thing in the procedure says you need to send something to us in writing with the request.
Well, I haven't been in this chamber since it was built.
That's okay. That's all right.
To tell you how long it's been.
I haven't seen the procedure in, oh, how many years either. But because I was asking, what do we do, you know, to address this? I mean, as the point you raised, David served this community for 29 years, which tells me the citizens in our community wanted him to represent them for 29 years. And I think that is something to be looked at and to be honored in some possible way. So if you would take a look at that, get that request into us, I guess you should go to... Who, you, Ray?
Either the clerk or myself.
Okay. And that will start a process for us to get down the path.
Ideally, I would like to get some Royal Palm Beach residents also. I think that, you know, I think a lot of people are gun-shy about coming to meetings right now, or, you know, they don't know the procedure, or they don't think their voice can be heard, so.
If you... If any of them want to email either the village clerk or myself, the village manager, arligans@royalpalmbeach.com, I will provide anybody who asks a copy of that policy.
That... Sorry. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you for coming in.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, no.
Okay. All right. Diane Queller, please come up and speak to us. It's been a while since you've been here.
Yes, we do. Yep. Diane Queller, 123 Sunflower Circle, Royal Palm Beach. I'm here tonight. I am really glad to see everybody back here upon council here. I had a meeting last night when we had the Treasure Coast planning thing, saw Mayor Pantel, and had a chance to talk to Mr. Liggins, too. The reason why I'm here tonight is to talk about something that's very important for safety of our children. And this is the parents that are parking in the Hart Trail next to H.L. Johnson and letting their kids off in the morning and picking them up in the afternoon. Now, I started this going to chief or to the captain at the district over here, and they said that they couldn't do anything, that I would have to go to Parks and Rec. So I called Parks and Rec, and I did receive a call back saying that they were going to look into it. And then I did receive a call from Chris Wax. And in fact, last night, when I walked in the room, Mr. Liggins says, "Oh, yeah, I know. You've got us... Got a call into us." I said, "Yeah, we need..." There was a sign up there for years that it says, "This driveway is closed from 7:15 to 8:15 and 1:15 to 2:15 in the afternoon." Now, unfortunately, I have seen within the past two weeks two incidences where kids almost got hit going across that sidewalk in front of the driveway. It keeps getting worse. The parents are now not only parking on the parking thing, but they're going up in the grass parking. There must be, especially in the afternoon, 15 cars at least. I did reach out when I talked to Ray last night. He said, "We need to get ahold of the principal." I did call the principal at H.L. Johnson today, and unfortunately, she couldn't get back to me, because it was a very busy day. They were doing the food distribution and stuff after school. So she got held up with that. But we need... I'm hoping council can take some action now. I'm a little confused on... The sheriff said they don't have any, you know, enforcement rules and stuff. But the only sign that's up there now is no parental drop-off. Now, who is there enforcing this? Nobody.
Whose sign is it?
It's our sign.
It is our sign?
Yes.
So is it up to the village personnel or Parks and Rec personnel to enforce that? But this is a tragedy waiting to happen, and I just don't want this to happen. I've got several kids in my neighborhood, because I live right on the other side of the Hart Trail there, that go down the sidewalk, going to school at H.L. I'm surprised that more parents in my neighborhood haven't voiced their concerns either. But as we found out last night at our meeting, there was only, what, two, three of us residents at the meeting? And the meeting... Oh, four, excuse me, four. And then the meeting before that, it was only me that was at the meeting, so.
We don't know how many we had online. Ray didn't share that with us, but...
Right. But anyhow, I just hope council can kind of step up, and we need to address this like ASAP.
All right, who was first?
Well...
Go ahead.
I was just going to comment, I'm pretty sure if it's a sign, as Ray said, we put up the sign. That's going to be a law enforcement issue, so I don't know why. My understanding is, we put up signs, and we say it's a violation, as long as it's a violation, and all of our ducks in a row.
We don't have our ducks in a row on that. It is a request.
Once we get our ducks in a row, then it should be something that is a law enforcement issue, and tickets would be appropriate. But once we get our ducks in a row, then I would think, to me, that would be the way to resolve the problem.
Well, but I remember a couple of years ago, we had this concern, and there was a crossing guard that was assigned.
Oh, no.
No. It was out there.
Yeah, you remember that. I remember that.
Yeah, there was a crossing guard that was then assigned to that because of that.
There used to be... There used to be a chain across the front of it, and that's gone.
It was... It was used for the construction during that period of time. And the construction company was using that land. And during that period is when we had a complaint, and we closed the driveway between 7:15 and 8:15. And the construction company handled that. We have no good way to enforce it. We have, I mean, this is a parking lot for the park. And to send somebody there twice a day to open and close gates and keep them off, that would be the only way to do it, is to physically block the driveway and keep people off, and have an employee go there in the morning and in the afternoon, four times a day. And that would be... That would... I would close the park before I would, at this time, agree to that. So we have this at every one of our schools. We have people... This is one of the safer drop-off areas. We have it on Okeechobee Boulevard in front of Royal Palm Elementary. We have it on Okeechobee Boulevard in front of... In front of the high school. We have it in... All around Cypress Trails. We have it in front of the middle school. I mean, if you look at all the parent drop-off areas that they're not supposed to be, this is probably one of the safest.
Well... No, I was thinking about, because of the crossing guards, I remember we talked about, is that the sheriff's office has, is it abundance of crossing guards?
No, they don't have an abundance of crossing guards. That crossing guard cost us $15,000. And we do not put crossing guard... There is no warrant to put crossing guards at driveways. Kids cross way too many driveways from their point of home to the point of school. We don't do that.
But is it that particular area that maybe we do need one at those times?
No, it would not warrant a crossing guard at that location.
I guess my understanding was, because we've had this problem, I'm going even further back. It was a problem that I even reported on, with the dangerous environment with parents dropping off kids at Cypress Trails, because the kids would wind up walking in front of the cars that were pulling in, all right, at the park. If I recall, though, the way we wound up with that was that it really was the responsibility of the school district to police that or address that.
That's the only way, anything around a school is going to be...
That's what I believe is still the case, no?
That's the only way to stop something happening around the school, if the school agreed it was dangerous and had somebody stationed at that location.
All right, perhaps we... Go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just going to jump in and say, so maybe the next step in this thing is to make sure we have a conversation with the principal over at the school and see if they're willing to do something. They manage traffic at the school. And if they are concerned, then they may be able to offer up an individual to manage that, as they do when they actually have the parents driving on school property and making sure that the kids are safe. I mean, they may be willing to do that.
When you say "we," are you saying "he, a, b"?
We could certainly reach out to the school.
And saying it's safe or not safe, I mean, the school's been there for over 30 years. This driveway and this parking lot have been there for over 30 years, too.
But the thing, that school was built for 300 students. Now, we have at least twice that much. Which now, as you know, parents are taking their kids more to school in their cars for safety reasons. And you can understand that and stuff.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Jen.
That's okay. Is there, not only just thinking about school professional who could do that, but is there a PTO or PTA group at that school that maybe they could get some volunteers to do that? So maybe there's... Maybe there's, you know, you could find five parents, one day apiece, to help do that. And really tell the parents who are coming in there that they're not really supposed to be doing that.
Got that, Jen?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good seeing you. All right. I have no other comment cards from the public, but if anyone from the public would like to comment on a non-agenda item or consent agenda item, now would be the time. Saying none, I'm closing public comments to non-agenda items and consent agenda items. And Diane, could you give us a consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of October 21st, 2021. Two, approval to purchase a playground apparatus from Miracle Recreation Equipment Company and have it installed at Veterans Park. The purchase amount shall not exceed $150,000 through Sourcewell Contract Number 010521 LTS. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into an agreement with Sport Services LLC for the reservicing of various sport courts throughout the village and creation of four pickleball courts. This purchase is not to exceed $105,000 and is piggybacking the City of Cooper City Term Contract, ITB2018-5, which is in effect through June 24th, 2024. Four, adoption of Resolution 2120, a resolution in the village council of the village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing, in accordance with established policy, the making of a budget amendment for Fund 001 in the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Said amendment represents the year-end 13th-period budget adjustment and appropriates $178,300 utility taxes, federal grants, public assistance, and other FEMA COVID police education and legal fees from developers and increased amounts budgeted in the legal, police, and public works department. Five, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an addendum to extend Village Hall architectural and design services provided by our... provided by REG Architects Incorporated for two years. Six, cancel award of the Contract to National Traffic Control Systems Incorporated in the amount of $757,764 for the Commons Park Pathway Lighting Project, PR 1903. And seven, authorization to reject, reject all bids received and opened at 3:00 PM on Friday, October 6th, 2021 for the Commons Park Pathway Lighting Project, PR 1903.
Okay. Any comments or questions or wanting to pull any items?
May I pull item number seven, please?
Number seven, okay. Any others? All right. We'll see you none. Then I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through six.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items one through six.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda items one through six were approved. And Selena.
It was just a quick question, is, if we're rejecting all bids, why would we have not gone with the second most responsive responsible bidder?
I'm going to leave that up to Mitty to answer. She's been the one that's been dealing with this.
The short answer is because you already awarded to the primary responsive responsible bidder. It was determined that they were responsible and responsive at the time of opening. The decision to not move forward with them should have been made at that time, since the council's already awarded. Additional information has come to light that warrants cancellation of that award and rejection and rebid of the item.
So, is that common practice then, is that we would reject all of them going forward? If there were ever this instance, then it's never just going to the second most responsive responsible?
Correct.
Gotcha. That was my question on that.
Yeah, but by definition, right? We have a procedure protocol for the selection process. By definition, when we select one, you have rejected.
Reject all the others, so there is no other to go back to.
Yeah, so you want them to get a second bite of apple, then you eat, you pull the whole thing, and then you republish it.
That was my only question.
There might be some new bidders too that might.
That's true. And now they all know what was awarded as the dollar amount too. And it's all public, so it'll be interesting to see how that goes.
By all but under is, I think, would wind up, would have even better bid.
Ah, there you go. Is the line $50?
We'll see.
All right. Well, then, I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number seven.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the agenda item seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda item number seven was approved also five zero. All right. That moves us to our regular agenda. Regular agenda item one is a public hearing to consider a request by the Western Academy Holdings LLC in adoption of Resolution Number 21-21 confirming the council's action. The requester is seeking approval by the local government having jurisdiction over the area, the village, of the use of the proceeds of bonds within the village in accordance with Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act as required by Section 147 Sub F of the Internal Revenue Service Code of 1986 for a property located at 12031 Southern Boulevard, which is the Western Academy. Who's going to report on this? You are? Sure.
A short time ago, my office was contacted by representatives of the Western Academy Charter School, which is an operating school in the village. It was explained to us that, under new ownership, the charter school is applying for some tax-exempt bond financing. And part of the application process requires the applicant to have this public hearing and have a resolution adopted by the governing body of the jurisdiction containing the school that there is no objection to the use or the, or the use of the tax-exempt funds. And as I said, the school already exists and operates, so this process is required by their application. There are representatives from the charter school who are present to answer any further questions, make whatever presentations are required by law for them to complete their application, which I guess includes asking for public comment and a request of this council to approve the resolution that's in the backup.
But did you say it was under new ownership? I didn't know it was new ownership.
I believe that's what we were told. And if I may have misspoken there, I know that there is an application for the financing.
There's a rumor that they're looking to relocate to a different location within the village. But, okay, having said that.
So, by all means, they can.
That's okay. Would you like to make a comments, the applicant? Yeah, come on. Come on down. This is the first time we put the speaker podium back where it was before. We're moving forward, trying to get out from under COVID, but go ahead.
I'm Dawn Hourback, the business manager at Western Academy, and this is Suri Miller, the principal.
Good evening.
Hi. We're looking to move from our current facility at Royal, we're in Royal Commerce Plaza right now to the facility that was from Renaissance, Palm West Charter. They closed their facility last year, and we are now looking to purchase that facility. And in order to purchase that facility.
Need some money.
We need the money.
Okay. So, this was a portion of the tax code I wasn't familiar with, but apparently it allows you, as a private entity, to issue your own bond. But the rules say you have to get the city that you're dwelling in.
We're actually, yes, we were actually, we're getting bonds through, I think, Arizona, in Arizona, and that part of the process is, this is the attorney. We have to get approval for those bonds.
Okay. You want to add something, ma'am?
I mean, I think she did a, she did a great job, actually. So, my name is Claudia Capasunor. I'm with Bryant Minter Olive. We were brought in for purposes of the resolution to assist Western Academy. As was mentioned, there is a bond issuance that is happening with Arizona Industrial Development Authority. That authority has the ability to issue bonds. And then those bond proceeds, once they're received, will make their way through a loan to Western Academy, who will then use those loan proceeds to make the improvements into the project. And in order to make sure that they are tax-exempt bonds, the IRS requires this hearing at the village, because this is the jurisdiction where the school is located, and therefore, it gives the public an opportunity to learn about the project and speak up if there's anything that they want to say. And in connection with that, is the approval of the resolution to formalize that the hearing took place for purposes of the IRS.
And you answered another question I was going to ask. You already answered. They are, they will be tax exempt because they're under this.
They are tax exempt because, under the tax code, the use is qualified. Yes, for public purpose, and they qualify.
And I just want to say to the public that this has nothing to do with the village. We were not involved in this at all. This is all done by the charter school.
Yes, that is correct. There's no financial obligation on the village. There's no risk on the village. It's simply that the project is occurring here and beneficial to the village.
Okay. Somebody had a question?
I do. It's not an agenda item question, it's just more the fact of the relocation. So, it seems from the outside that the properties are roughly the same size, considering what the, what they were utilized for before. But are you expanding, and that's why you want to move? And is that a bigger property? And do you find the need then, because you are getting more students coming in?
Yes. Currently, we are at 510 students. This will be a four-year build, four-year growth, yeah. And we will be up to close to 800 students by the time, so.
And you're going to keep the same grades that you have now, because you go up to, okay. So, it's just expand the classrooms. Gotcha.
It's been, K through five elementary is going to be expanded.
That's a nice facility at Renaissance.
Yes. I mean, they're all type.
Lot of space, too.
And I've been in your school, it's beautiful. So, that's why I was wondering, is just because is that a bigger space? I know the playground is different, and the parking is.
Well, yes. We also are currently in two separate buildings too.
Yeah, they have a campus now, but.
This is more enclosed.
Right.
With our own playground right now. We have a little playground, so.
So, taking a look at the resolution, it's pretty specific about what our role is, I think, in this approval, and what it is not. It talks about not an endorsement, it talks about not a recommendation. It talks about all of those things, which I think alleviates any concern, at least on my part, for any responsibility that we may be picking up by approving this resolution.
That's exactly correct, Mr. Hamara, that there is no exposure to the village, that we are simply facilitating this part of their application process by having this.
Absolutely. And that is, that's a, that's a great facility. I mean, you guys benefit from, I don't know, six years? However long Palm West Charter was over there, and they set it up, and now you can walk in and take it to the next level, right? Great. Looking forward to it.
Any questions from council? Diane, do we have any public comments pre-submitted for this agenda item?
No public comment.
Ray, we have any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
I have no public comment cards submitted to me here, but does anyone here like to comment on this agenda item? If not, then I'm going to close public comment to agenda item R1. If there are no further questions or comments from members on council, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I approve regular gen item number one. Make a motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R1 was approved five zero. Good luck, and.
Absolutely. Keep doing the great job you're doing.
Okay. Agenda item R2 is a public hearing to consider application 21-55, an application by Marcos Yunus for the consideration of the landscape waiver from Village Code Section 15-133 Sub C, Sub 1, and Sub 2 in order to eliminate the, the parallel divider strip and the required landscaping on the west side of the building as part of the conversion to a fenced dog-walking area for a property located at 10465 Southern Boulevard, situated within the village shops on 441 by Access Specialty Animal Hospital. This is a quasi-judicial process, so you need to swear in some folks.
Yes, sir. Can the applicant, can you approach the podium, sir, and state your name when you get there?
Good evening. This is Manny Gutierrez from Gutierrez on Los Angeles Architects.
Thank you. Before you proceed, let me swear you in. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir?
I do.
Thank you. And before you speak further, I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte disclosures on this item?
None.
Village mayor, just a stat.
Okay. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Bradford, you're out there. You can sit for now.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. As you stated, the applicant is requesting a landscape waiver from Village Code Section 15133 C1 and 2, parallel divider strips, in order to convert the existing parallel divider strip to a dog run, and to eliminate the required shrub and/or ground cover requirement within the divider strip. The site is located within the village shops on 441. Village Code requires a landscape divider strip to run parallel to the long dimension of the parking space, and shall be provided after each row of ten parking spaces. This just divider strip shall also be eight feet wide, exclusive of walkways and curving. Additionally, within this divider strip, there shall be a minimum of one tree and one shrub and one, and/or one ground cover for every two linear feet. This is the divider strip that we will, that we are speaking of. The applicant contends that, quote, "We are eliminating the landscape island, but we are fencing it to create an outdoor dog run to serve the existing Access Specialty Animal Hospital veterinarian clinic building." Said outdoor dog run area was unanimously approved by the Village of Royal Palm Beach Planning and Zoning Commission and Village Council. Please also note that the width of the proposed fence island is 34 feet in width, and only eight feet is required. Also, the two required existing trees will remain in the island to provide shade and greenery. Lower plantings and sod in the island that would not be particularly inside the dog run will be substituted with artificial turf. We will be using a green-coated chain-link fence that will be transparent. It is in my professional opinion that the proposed 30-foot-wide outdoor dog run area with two mature trees and transparent green vinyl fence more than satisfies the intent of this code section, which is visually separate breakup parking rows of more than 10 parking spaces, and also to provide shade. Continuing, the approval of this landscape waiver variation will be tied to the veterinarian clinic use. This means that the outdoor run kennel will be there only as long as a veterinarian clinic is there. If we, the veterinarian clinic leaves, the landscaping island would be, very easily be restored to fully comply with this section of the code. This item was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on October 26th, 2021, and was recommended for approval by a vote of three to two, with Commissioners Ray Nazareth and David Liedland dissenting. Staff is recommending denial of this landscape waiver request, given that the divider strip is 34 feet in width. Therefore, there is sufficient space to accommodate both the required shrub material and, and the dog run. It's important to note that the, again, the divider strip will not be removed and can be converted back to Village Code compliant divider strip should the building be occupied by a different user in the future. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay. Is everyone clear on what they're asking us? Okay, because I'm not.
No, I think that's, go ahead. Because I was going to ask Bradford on clarification, because there's two agenda items for the same business. So, just so Bradford, and you can actually go back to the other slide if you want. So, I'm glad they're leaving the trees. But we're talking about, for this agenda item, we're speaking specifically of the textured-looking area, correct?
Yes. The landscaped area, Village Code requires a landscape divider strip between every 10 parking spaces. And this divider strip here is what serves as that break of the 10 parking spaces. So, they'll be converting this into a dog run, and the shrubs will be excluded from this landscape island, where Village Code requires one shrub per, I think, was it two linear feet?
So, you're going to, what you're saying then is that they're going to remove the shrubbery, leave the trees, put artificial grass down, and that constitutes as still having the landscaping commitment as.
That, that's why they're going for the landscape waiver, because technically, the landscape island is being removed and replaced with a dog run. But there are going to be two trees and artificial turf, turf within this area, which the applicant contends that that is, meets the intent of Village Code.
So, then we're going to use artificial turf instead of grass in that area?
Astroturf, yeah.
Astroturf, well, right. I don't know if there's any cushion on it, but yeah, that's the, okay. That's what I wanted for clarification. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Does the applicant like to make comments?
Sure.
Again, this is Manny Gutierrez, Gutierrez on Los Angeles Architects. Dr. Yunus was with me last time. He was, he's doing a seminar in, in the west coast, so he apologized, said he couldn't be here. This, this item, I, I think everybody was the same when we came back before you guys in April. The, the graphics that we showed you then have not changed. It's the same graphic that we applied for at the time. We applied for special exception. As you know, this is, this is incredible. We do animal clinics all over Florida, and this is the best one that we've ever done. The services that they offer in this clinic are maybe a few veterinary hospitals in Florida. So, to have that in your community, that have that service, me as a dog lover, it's incredible to have that there. They, this building was not built for them, so they had to accommodate themselves. I think that it's, that is the only thing that they're asking. They, they really need this. It's a place where the dogs come out. The fencing really is just because they had an incident in another hospital that they have south, and the dog went off the leash, and the dog got run over by a car. So, they don't want to have that situation. We presented that to this council before, and it was approved as a special exception. Again, the graphics are the same. We have not changed anything, and it was also approved by the Architectural Board. The graphics did not change, and what we were presenting. It's just that we have to go, I mean, we, we were able to finish the hospital faster than this process, so we removed this from the original request, because, you know, as Bradford explained to you, we had to go through, we've had to go through, and we're not done yet. After we get these two, then we have to do a sideline modification. So, the process, even though it was very small, what we were asking, there were a lot of things going in there. So, we had to get the special exception first, then the Architectural Board, and then we had to go ahead and clean it up, because in fact, we were technically not keeping the landscaping island. And the next item in the agenda is something similar for the same reason. So, one of the things was that, well, can you do the park smaller? It could be, but it's really defeating the purpose. Then that's the reason why we're asking for it. So, we, so, because they actually would need, for a hospital that size, they could use a patio that will be three times as much as what we're getting. But we're not touching, we're not changing, we're not decreasing parking, so we thought that this was the least intrusive that we could do, and they could get their. So we thought that this was the least intrusive that we could do, and they could get their area. And then again, it's tied into their use. And so, and nobody has protested about it. It doesn't really bother anybody. The neighbors don't even see it, because it's a blank wall, and they have two parking bays across. So nobody from the public has been affected. So if in the future the animal clinic goes away, it would be exactly the same as it was before. It's lucky that we had that island that was 34 feet wide. Normally only eight feet are required. So yes, we don't, we do have a fence and we don't have the shrubs, but we have two trees where actually one tree would actually be code, and this is 34 foot wide between car and car. So, you know, some of the necessity of what it's wanting to be done is being accomplished, I think.
If I may, and this is more a question for Bradford, is, I understand what they want to do. There's two things is you're saying that it's easy to convert back once this particular business leaves. Is there a stipulation that we can, and this might be a you question, is there a stipulation we can put in there that they need to put it back the way it was prior to this when they do leave? And then my second, go ahead. And I don't know if this is a Keith question or is this a Bradford question?
I think this would probably be a midi question as far as conditioning a variance to revert it back to its code compliant landscape island divider strip.
So this this doesn't carry the same weight as a variance, a full-on variance, it's a landscape waiver, because it's a landscape code that's being requested to be to be deviated from. You could certainly, as a condition of any approval tonight, condition that, just to be very clear, that it's in a development order, that upon the ownership changing, that it gets reverted back. That certainly would, in this case, work. The next item is a little bit more complicated because of the variance running with the land, but for this one, it doesn't run with the land. It would, it should end at this tenant, but you could condition it if you want the guarantee.
So we could then...
To further that midi, I can also condition the minor site plan modification whenever they come in for that approval so that we can further kind of, you know, drive that point home.
Exactly, just to keep the conditions constant with all the applications.
Okay, perfect. And then my second question was, is there any way that now replacing the shrubs with artificial turf be misconstrued by anybody else, whether residential or commercial, that they would then be able to do the same thing?
I think would, and Bradford, I'll step in if I if I may. I think what makes this a little bit difficult to understand is that the island itself is staying, the divider strip is staying. So what's there, I think, is irrelevant, whether it's turf or one tree or two trees or three trees. It's not being used as a parallel divider strip, which then your code requires to have the appropriate vegetation. So I think the answer to your question is no. If turf goes in there, we could also at the site plan modification make a condition so that that's even clearer at that point. But I don't think just because the turf goes down that that means it it's okay going forward.
Because it's just the way it was worded was that if we do have the turf in there, that it still meets the requirement because it is sectioned off. I just don't want somebody else coming in here saying like, okay, now we're going to tear up our grass and put astroturf.
Right.
And we're going to use site this as an example where, because it was a home in, there was a homeowner in West Palm Beach who did that and tore up his yard and put down astroturf in there, so he didn't have to worry about the yard anymore. So I just want to make sure we're clear that it is this specific, and somebody can't come in and use the same example with that.
Right, and I think the site plan modification is probably the more appropriate place to make that condition, just so it's it's very clear.
All right, so if I understand what you just said, that we could include that condition of approval for reversion if they decide to move away?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? All right, is that agreeable to you?
I, Dr. Yunus is not here. I'm going to answer for him. And I I think that that would be with what they're getting. They're definitely, you know, are, I mean, they invested. I don't want to tell you how much money it was in the inside, so this will be insignificant for what it means to them. So I think, you know, I don't, I think it will be a no brainer for them.
Okay, good. Any other comments? Ray, let's see if there's any comments from the public. Would any previous comments submitted for agenda item R2?
No, Mayor, no comments.
Anyone have their hand raised? I have no public comment cards from anyone here, so I'm closing public comment on agenda item R2. There are no further comments or questions, members on council. I'll look for a motion to approve.
Do you, do you want me to?
R2.
So midi, do I need to word it and include the condition of?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number two with the condition that the property will be converted back to its current state when the tenant moves out.
That's sufficient.
If the tenant moves out. We don't want them to...
No, we want them to be successful forever.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R2 was approved 5-0. We go to agenda item R3, which also is a public hearing to consider application 21-54, an application by Marcos Yunus for the consideration of a variance from the Village Code Section 23-49 Sub D, Sub 6, Sub B, to provide for variance to eliminate a portion of the required sidewalk from the rear parking area to the front of the building, where Village Code requires an uninterrupted six-foot wide continuous pedestrian accessway connecting the rear parking area to the public entrance in front of the building for approximately 3.61 acre parcel of land located on the northwest corner of Southern Boulevard in State Road 7 by Access Special Animal Hospital. Was he already sworn in for this item as well?
He was, sir, so I'll just turn to the council and ask if there are any additional ex parte disclosures on this item?
None.
Thank you.
All right, Bradford.
Great, thank you very much, everyone. Again, this subject site is located on the northwest corner of Southern Boulevard and State Road 7 and situated within the Village Shops on 44, 441 Shopping Center. The applicant is requesting a parking variance from Village's Code of Ordinance Section 2349 B6B in order to eliminate a portion of the required sidewalk from the rear parking area to the front of the building, where Village Code requires a six-foot wide continuous pedestrian accessway connecting the rear of the parking area to the public entrance in front of the building. Here, this slide shows that accessway, an accessway connecting the rear parking lot and the public entrance in the front of the building exists today and is shown here by this arrow. The criteria for granting variances is set forth in Section 2632 F6B. Specifically, special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved do not result from the actions of the applicant will confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. On the granting of the variance is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land, building or structure will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved, detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant intends to reconfigure the landscape island, as we stated before, to accommodate a dog run. The applicant contends that the users of the parking area in the rear of the building will be employees of the animal hospital, and there will be ample parking at the front and to the sides of the building, making the sidewalk largely unnecessary for the parking spaces in the rear of the building. Village staff is not in support of this variance request because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. The condition is a result from the actions of the applicant and will confer on the applicant special privileges that are denied by other lands. And this is a strict adherence to our variance approval criteria. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application, and they recommended approval of this application. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Yes, was the planning and zoning approved 5-0?
They, they recommended approval.
Three to two.
Three to two.
Three to two.
The same, the same, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sir, would you like to make comments?
Good evening. Dr. Yunus is still not here. Which a lot of times comes with a lot of help. So this is Manny Gutierrez, Gutierrez on Los Angeles Architects, again. This very similar, the, we are really not eliminating this, the sidewalk, because it's always going to stay there. It's just going to be blocked, and obviously for putting a fence, if we leave the two sides open for the people to walk through, it doesn't make any sense, because the dogs are going to get out. So if we have that wall connection, it defeats the whole purpose. Originally, this was a little bit theoretical, because we were, my, my position, or Marcus, Dr. Yunus's position, the hospital's position, was that we understand what this, this requirement for the code is, is for if there's people parking in the back, that there's a safe way that to get from the front to the back. So there is a door for employees entering the back. Now, after a year of them being there, it's more than hypothetical, we've already tested it, because, you know, nobody needs to park in the back. There's more than plenty of parking. The cars, the dogs don't drive, and they don't stay there, you know, they get dropped off and people leave. So it's like a, you know, it's not like a people is coming. So it, the same situation occurs that this could run with their use. Unfortunately, as, as I said originally, they did not design the building. So yes, it's something that we are causing, but they try to accommodate themselves in a building that best suit them, and, and we had to go through this minor considering everything that they're bringing to the community and service and the money they're spending, the jobs that they're creating. If they leave, they, the fence will be out, and the sidewalk, you know, for whoever uses it or needs it will be there, will be still there. The connection's there. It's not being removed. You know, it's, it's being blocked, really, what, what it should have said. So it's basically the same situation as, as the other one. They need the space for the, for the proper use, and the, and the hospital needs it bad. And it was the only place that, that we could do the least amount of damage without changing the site plan of the building that, that we didn't design from scratch.
Good question. And I understand what you're saying. Is the intent to open the back doors and let the dogs run out on their own into the fenced-in area?
No, no, the, the...
They would have to be taken?
Yeah, yeah, there's people, there's people that, that go with the dogs, but the dogs walk out and move around and do exercise. This, these are not dogs. There's, they don't board.
Right.
Yeah, the dogs that are there are for, are, there's, there's dogs that are there before surgery or after surgery, and they're recuperating. This is not like dogs that are fighting with, or, or like barking at people or whatnot. These are dogs that are sick. They're, they're in the hospital.
No, I, yeah, I understand that, and I don't have, I don't have any issue with the request for the fence. My concern is, is where the fence starts. So that's why my question was, is you're not just going to open up the back doors and let the dogs run into that fenced-in area. You would have to, so could the fence line start on the other side of the sidewalk? So you're not blocking the sidewalk, since somebody's going to have to walk the dogs back there anyway?
Well, again, but this is about six foot, but like same situation was, that it was becoming, the park was being like a little sliver now. If you, if you...
Give you a lot of space.
You know, the reason...
Right.
And, and that was a question that, that the city engineer asked me, and I said, listen, we wouldn't be doing the variance if we didn't need it, you know what I mean? We're going through all this hassle just for a little piece of land.
Right.
So that they could have, like I said, they could use a park that's three times the size of that.
So is the intent then to put astroturf on the sidewalk?
No, the sidewalk starts, stays.
Stays.
Yeah, if you see the graphic that we show, is the same one that we had, the sidewalk stays. The area where there was shrub, we're just putting astroturf, because the shrubs won't last to the dogs.
I understand that. And maybe Bradford, if you can put up that...
Yeah, put that picture back up.
Because I think maybe I'm just having a hard time understanding is, the way I'm visualizing it is that the fence...
It's, it's the, the, our, that drawing, yeah. See, that's the sidewalks, it stays there.
Right, so the sidewalk stays there, but your intent is to fence in the entire area, which blocks the sidewalk?
Right, so that there's not a, so the dogs are never outside of the hospital.
Right, I understand that, but they're going to be walking on the sidewalk then. It's basically what it is, because you're not covering it, so you need that extra...
Yeah, and the sidewalk is part of the walk, walking area.
Right.
Yes.
I, I understand that. I'm just saying is that if you're using that, is you're not covering it up and making it part of the grass where the dogs can roam. They're now roaming on the sidewalk.
If you want it, I mean, you, if we...
Are you suggesting they put astroturf over that too?
Well, what I'm saying is that it, it, to me, it makes more, it makes sense so that you don't have to have the variances if the fence starts where the, where the grass line would start or where the green would start. But if you're saying that you need that extra six, that width of six feet, then it makes sense to cover it so that the dogs can roam on that...
They can, the, the dogs don't necessarily need to be on the astroturf. They could be walking outside also on the, on the concrete. So, you know, in the sidewalk area. So, but, but if, if, maybe I'm not understanding.
No, no, yeah.
You understand. I guess my question really is, is there damage, are we concerned about maybe the sidewalk being damaged and not being covered? But does it make it look more practical for the dogs, like they're saying, boy, we got all this astroturf, we don't have any concrete? I don't know.
We're not, we're not concerned about the sidewalk being damaged. We're not concerned about that.
All right.
Right, and it wasn't that. It was just, and maybe Bradford, if you can put the cursor on there so you can see the line, the clear line that's drawn there. That's, no, the other way, that one, yep.
That's the line.
Is that's the line, is where my suggestion would be where the fence would start, instead of starting it back by the door, since the dogs aren't going to be able to come out on their own. Somebody still has to walk them, is walking them out there. But if you're telling me is that you need that extra six feet width...
As part of the park, and again, we don't want the, if, if we move the fence over, then you are coming outside of the hospital, outside, and then back inside the park.
No, it's not totally enclosed.
We don't, we don't want to, we don't want...
It's still unfenced, isn't it?
Yeah, but then you got a...
No, because you have to open it so people can...
You have to open a door to get in, yeah, it's, I, I understand what he's saying. Hold on, I think Jeff was next. Okay, Jeff?
So, hey, Bradford, so what, what is, what is the practical concern here for what they're requesting that prompted denial on the staff's part, or is it just the technicality?
Yes, sir. It's, it's the technicality. We, we don't have the latitude to consider practicality. You know, this is very practical, yes. It is bisecting a side...
And, and I was, I was trying to, trying to tap into your practical insight into this.
Yes, right.
He's not allowed to do that.
Practical reason that we should deny this from your point of view.
If, if I was sitting in your seat, this is a practical, this is practical.
And I'm not sure if I got a, or if I didn't hear the answer to Selena's questions. Are all these dogs that are outside here, are they roaming free? Are they on leashes or a combination of both?
They're, 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 they're running, they're not in a leash, but they come out with a, with a, with a person.
So someone is, someone is walking them that has control of them?
They're there. They will take them off the leash. They, they'll...
Okay.
So they'll put them in a leash when they take them out of the cage inside, when they go outside the door, they don't take them out. They might not, if there's a dog that's very sick, they might keep them in a leash.
Okay.
But not, but they could allow a dog to roam.
Okay, that, and my thought was, which you just said, not a good thought, because if they were all on leashes and they were all in control, I don't see why you couldn't put gates and let people walk through, but if they're not all going to be on leashes, that's not practical, so.
Yeah.
Okay, you, you answered it, thank you.
We do pet resorts also. It's, it's amazing how, it's amazing, it takes one second for a dog to escape.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's like in the blink of an eye, we have, we do pet resorts, actually, we, we, one of them is, I'm part of it in Miami, and, and the people that leave their dogs there, th- these dogs are more important than their kids. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm telling you, it's, it's amazing. I'm sorry? No, it's, they go there, they stay there, and they wash them and say, at least they're appreciate what I'm doing for them, you know?
No, and my, my thought was if they were always on a leash and in control, because I know practically, as Councilman Ramirez said, you know, this isn't something that's well-traveled. I'm familiar with this shopping center and situation and the difficulty it's had over the years with the, with the overpass and everything. So I, I practically understand what you're doing, and I'm inclined to agree with it. Thank you.
I might have missed this, but how tall is the fence? How tall is the fence?
I, I believe the fence is seven feet, because they're, the, the...
Bradford, do you agree with that?
There are climbers.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some that can actually...
Sure, that's my, that's why I'm asking the question.
This is, it's in the note right here, and this note, I believe, reads seven feet.
It is our fence height six feet?
Seven feet.
In the, but our... But our code, isn't it fence six feet and shrubs are eight feet?
Fence is on...
I believe that's in residential areas.
Yeah, and, and either way, you're not approving tonight. Should this be approved? You're not approving the fence installation. You're just approving the variant, you're approving the variance for the sidewalk requirement, so...
We're ready to give them the fence.
Well, it's good to know, because, I mean, there's one more, I know, I mean, I just can, I just can never leave here, you know, it's like, we're going to a sixth hearing for this.
You got any further questions?
No, thank you.
Yep, 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 yep. All right, before we move, um, public comments, do we have any prior public comments?
No mayor.
Did anyone raise their hand?
No mayor.
Okay, I have no public comments received here, if anyone wants to comment, that would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment on agenda item R3. If there are no further questions or comments from council, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane?
Thank you, everybody, we'll see you in the next one.
Thank you, have a good night.
At the record show, agenda item R3 was approved 5-0.
We'll be back.
Good luck, Will.
The hospital's doing real well, so, and, and I have to thank, we were involved in the construction part of it, so I gotta tell you that as hard as this little part has been, the best part is that they were able to open, the building, your building department was fantastic, I just want to say that.
Oh, good, that's good to know.
You know, for the approvals and working with us in the plans and whatnot.
We have a lot of dog lovers in our village, and this is a place they can take them to get treated for any elements they have, is a good thing.
So, thank you very much.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, agenda item R4 is a public hearing for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1014, amending chapter 20 signs at section 20-1, definitions to amend and create definitions for select terms related to sign identification, regulation, and at sections 20-2, 20-22, 20-25, 20-27, 20-41, 20-54, 20-57, 20-65, 20-71, and 20-73, confirming the council's, uh, concern, uh, to conform village code to recent legal precedent regarding signs to provide internal consistency.
Thank you, mayor. You, council may recall, this is our second crack at second reading for this ordinance.
Yes.
We started this hearing last month and continued it to tonight. Um, we have rewritten the definition of temporary sign from the last time the council saw this ordinance, so that the definition of temporary sign now focuses really on the fact that temporary sign is constructed of materials that allow the sign to be easily removed, relocated, disposed of, and stored, as opposed to being a permanent structure on the ground, as opposed to how you saw it last month, which sort of conflicted-
Duration, yeah.
Really talked in terms of duration instead of, um, material and ability to relocate and dispose of. So, other than that, it's the same document the council saw last month, um, with that change in that definition of temporary sign.
Richie, you had a question for that?
Yeah, and I, I'm happy to see, great job, thank you guys for, uh, for doing that, because temporary in one section now explains the fact that we have temporary signs that can stay a lot longer, so temporary wasn't time duration, and that's great. Um, but I'd like to point out, I brought this up with the village manager, um, unfortunately, Supreme Court heard another case this week dealing with signs that dealt with resident, or no, onsite versus off-site signs. So, that means like, you have a business, and you have a billboard that's not located on your business, and you advertise-
But you have a sign up for your business.
That's not on your property, so they could be-
We don't have any billboards in the village.
We could be mess, well, a sign, so basically, for example, if you own a restaurant, I own a restaurant, I could put a restaurant advertising mine on your property.
That makes no sense.
Right now, we prohibit off-site signs.
Right, and hopefully, we'll, we'll see what they do, and hopefully it doesn't turn the apple cart up again.
Supreme Court actually took this on?
Oh, yeah, this is City of, City of Austin, yeah, they, they, uh-
Must be a slow week, yeah, okay.
That case, that case from five or six years ago really has, I, I'm sure Keith will attest, uh, a significant impact on a lot of municipalities across the country.
Off-site signage is a, is a very difficult, del, hot, difficult and delicate issue because-
But hopefully it's a path we will-
Yeah, so hopefully it won't affect us, but as far as this goes, I think it's, uh, an excellent job, and it's-
Any other questions from members of council? Seeing none, Diane, any prior, uh, public comments on this agenda item? Anyone got their hand raised?
No mayor.
Okay, I have no public comment cards submitted, so I will close public comment on agenda item R4 and look for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve regular agenda item R4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved in the second reading, 5-0. Okay, agenda item R5 is a public hearing also for a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1021, amending village code at chapter 11, fire prevention and protection section 11-23. We got you again, we got you here all night, I'm sorry, Keith, I just realized this. Uh, propane, propane storage in order to better conform village regulations with industry standards relative to tank sizes. Bradford?
Well, this is Rob Hill.
Rob, I'm sorry, Rob.
Hello, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, good evening, mayor and council, this is the second reading on what we had brought to you the first time, just to make it more uniform with what, uh, the industry storage tank sizes are, and to make it, uh, just a better fit for, for the all-around use of propane with our, within our village, without compromising any kind of, uh, aesthetics, and that's all.
Okay, questions from members of council? Seeing none. Uh, Diane, any public comments submitted in advance?
No.
Ray, any hands raised for agenda item R5?
No, mayor.
Okay, I have no public comment cards submitted, so I'm closing public comment on agenda item R5 and look for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show agenda item R5 was approved 5-0. Okay, what is all that noise out there?
Attendants.
Okay, we'll go with that. All right, agenda item R6 is a public hearing for first reading and approval of the ordinance number 1020, amending chapter nine, fences, hedges, walls. At section 9.9-1, permit required for construction, permit fee, to add an exemption to the permit requirement for fence repairs or replacement which is less than 25% of the permitted installation. And at section 9.8, residential zoning districts, to revise existing regulations to require certain fences installed in residential zoning districts to be constructed to present the furnished side, the finished side, that means the good side?
Yes.
Uh, of the fence to the adjoining lot or any abutting right of way. This is also community development.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, good evening again, this is just a, uh, there's some housekeeping in this regarding, uh, the amount that people can repair or replace their permitted fences without requiring a permit. And then there's also a clarification as to how we determine the fees for fences, there was a, a reference to something like a dollar a foot from way back in 1960 that we're cleaning up. And then what we're trying to do is get out ahead of, of a trend that we see in, in some mature neighborhoods, and that's where people tend to start wanting to put fences out and beyond the front of their property. So, what we're proposing here is not that fences that are behind the front line and abut a neighbor's property, that it has to be good side out towards your neighbor. What we are proposing is that any fencing that goes beyond the front edge of the home would become, you know, and adjacent to a neighboring property and/or adjacent to a road right of way, say a corner lot, then those fences, they would also have to be four foot tall at a maximum, but they would have to be good side out. Uh, and we're hoping to avoid, uh, what we've seen in a few instances already where it makes an ugly side to, uh, the other neighbor and to the road right of way, and it creates a blight.
Okay, so let me, see if I understand this, because we, I guess we've been silent on this issue about which way the fences are facing, we have a few instances in the village where people put the, the bad side out front?
That's correct.
Okay, if we pass this, uh, this is the first reading, but if this, if this passes, this ordinance passed, what happens to the folks who are now violation, are they grandfathered, or do they have to comply?
It's my understanding that, uh, their fence would be allowed to remain there until it got, uh, replaced with a different permit, and then the standard would apply.
Okay, so if they wanted to upgrade or modify, it would then kick in?
Correct, it'd be illegal nonconformity until they made changes.
Any other questions from members on council?
No, I'm thinking weird. What if they do two sections at a time, never need a permit? With hurricane season, when only a portion of it comes down?
What do you mean, two sections?
Well, we have it, less than 25%.
Well, what we would do is, we would just review it to make sure that it was originally permitted, and if it was in that case, then, uh, we wouldn't be concerned with that. As long as there was a permit identifying that fence and that location, uh, if somebody had a, had a, had a reason to just repair 25% at a time, uh, we, we wouldn't be too concerned.
That, but they would still have to make it face the right way.
Well, but that's, that's what councilmen were supposed to say.
That's correct.
Well, that would be interesting.
You can, you can, yeah, so you can replace 20% of your fence at a time and keep it the way you want it, right, and you don't need a permit.
But eventually, if they keep doing it piecemeal, eventually the fence will be right.
No.
Yeah, it has to face, the replacement has to face the right way, it has to comply.
Not if you have less than 25% at a time.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct, Ian?
But I'm not sure that the 25%, that's only about pulling the permit, that even if it's less than 25%, if it's front, in the front yard, front of the front building line, it would still be, have to be finished side out.
Has to be faced side out, that's what I read, that's what I read.
That's correct.
And if, even if they didn't pull a permit, we could get them on code enforcement for not being in compliance with the code.
Okay. That's correct.
Because they're not gonna wiggle through that.
But good thoughts though.
Hey, man.
Good. Remember, remember, code enforcement.
All right.
Good fences make good neighbors.
Yeah, I would hope so.
Especially with the Chinese side out.
That's amazing to me that someone would even do that, but, okay.
Someone would.
No, no, well, obviously they did.
That's why we're already here, right?
That's why we're doing this one. Uh, any other comments, members of council, questions? Uh, Diane, any prior public comments on agenda item R6? Ray, anyone have their hand raised on this agenda item?
No, mayor.
Uh, I have no comment cards from the public, so I'm gonna close, uh, public comments on agenda item R6 and ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve regular agenda item number six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show agenda item R6 is approved 5-0. I wish everyone, uh, blessed and peaceful Thanksgiving next week, and enjoy the time off, and the kids will be home, and, uh, that should be fun next week. Uh, all the teachers I know have been telling me for the last two weeks, they can't wait for the break, you know, the break is coming.
They start at early, which is-
They did, yeah. Anyway, we stand adjourned, thank you.